...for attending the March 2026 school board meeting. This meeting is called to order at 6:30. Let the minutes show that all members are in attendance except for Mr. Ben Morales.
Continue, please.
Yes. Please, right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Vision statement: Working together, Fabian's ISD creates a positive and lasting impact throughout multiple learning opportunities. Mission statement: All students of the district will be prepared to be successful lifelong global workers. First item on the agenda, Fabian's ISD superintendent recognitions and updates presented by Ms. Sofia Maciel and Ms. Jason Blair.
Good evening, Board President Estrada, trustee superintendent. My name is Sofia Maciel and I'll be presenting the superintendent update. We're going to start with item 2G, Superintendent Monthly Updates video. I'm here with Mr. Aldaco, Mr. Manuel Aldaco, who is our new Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, good morning, Ms. Sofia. My name is Manuel Aldaco. Excited to be the new Assistant Superintendent here at Fabian's ISD. Been in education for over 20 years and I'm excited for this next step and being a part of the Wildcat family.
Tell us how Fabian has treated you so far.
Well, it's been like family. It feels like I haven't missed a step since day one. It's been above and beyond what I could have expected. I've had a chance to visit with all campuses and I see so many great things happening that my mindset and my job right now is really just latching on to the great things happening at each school and being a part of the success that Fabian's ISD is already undergoing.
What are your sports? Who are your teams? Tell us everything.
Well, if we look at professional teams, basketball, I'm a big Laker fan. If we're thinking NFL, I'm a big Chicago Bears fan. But overall now, I'm a Wildcat for everything and anything.
There you go. That's the right answer. So, thank you so much. Welcome to Fabian's ISD and here is your update. Our very own team of eight attended a training at Region 19 on February 27th. We appreciate the support from our board as we enhance collaboration and leadership within our student body and community. The Lower Valley Games blew us away. The gusty winds did not stop our athletes from showing up with heart, hustle, and pride. A huge thank you to Clint, San Luisario, Torneo, and four Hancock ISDs for joining us here in Fabian's. Junior Azul Ratamosa represented Fabian's at the ATSSB All-State Band. Her incredible talent and dedication has truly earned her this honor. Mariachi Gatos Salvajes competed at the state level in Seguin, Texas on February 20th, earning an excellent rating across the board. Puro orgullo, si señor. Fabian's Elementary rose to new heights on Caite. Students filled the sky with vibrant colors and laughter. It was most uplifting. Fabian's Middle School STEM Family Night was a scientific experience. March 20th was an evening filled with learning, discovery, and so much fun at the cellular level. TAFI is heading to Nationals again. A huge round of applause to Junior Ramon Longoria and sophomore Scala Portillo are TAFI national qualifiers. Mr. Suspaita and his class interviewed the pair and produced this segment.
TAFI is the Texas Association of Future Educators. It is a student organization based around the teaching profession to help students prepare for a career path in teaching.
It felt very shocking. I wasn't expecting it at all. I was kind of doubting myself a bit, but it feels really amazing to know that I can accomplish something just in small amount of time.
It feels really good. All the hard work we put in really paid off and just getting the opportunity to go so far, it just feels amazing.
That's it for that video. Thank you so much. At this moment, I would like to ask Coach Levario if he could join us at the podium.
Thank you, community, board members, Dr. Segovia, for this opportunity to highlight our kids once again. We have a young lady that wasn't able to join us the last time because she was playing. Both of them actually earned another award, so that's why Pedro's back here. So, we're going to start off with our young lady, Elani Ramirez. She was a district placer, regional qualifier. And she earned Academic Allstate. She didn't know about that one. Oh, that's Pedro's? You can't have Pedro's. There you go. We'll get another picture right now. That's for you. And then Pedro Ramirez here again because he also got Academic Allstate.
At this moment, we will be going, we will be recognizing, sorry, recognizing boys and girls basketball programs. They are at a showcase today, so I have asked Coach Hernandez, who I saw in the, oh, there you are, sir. If you could give us a hand with this one. Coach Luna and Coach Blair are at the showcase at present.
Sorry. Good afternoon, Board President, Mr. Estrada, Dr. Segovia, and board members, committee members. So, like Sofia said, our boys and some of our girls are right now representing us at the, at a small school showcase, which is at Clint right now. So, right after this, I'm just going to go ahead over there. So, these young men are not here, so I'll be able to just take them and present them to them at the proper time. Also gives me an opportunity to inform the community and also the board that on April 5th, we will be hosting the All-Star Game, which is a small school and big school. So, for the past six years, El Paso County has not, has not taken the lead in providing a showcase for boys' basketball. They've done it for volleyball. They've done it for, for football, for girls' basketball, but nobody has taken the lead to do it for basketball. And I probably could say that your famous coach is able to take the lead, not only take the lead in organizing and promoting our community, but also creating a El Paso Boys Basketball Association, which will provide scholarships for our athletes and also gives them an opportunity for them to be showcased and maybe those athletes that have not been signed, gives them an opportunity to, that one last time to get that scholarship. We just got good news today that we've been reaching out to coaches to come to El Paso. It's very hard for them to come to watch our kids participate. Usually they want us to send film, but sometimes you send film and a lot of coaches will look at that film and if you know, I mean, you're going to send the highlights, the good things that our kids do. So, knowing that they make mistakes and stuff like that, they want to see it live. So, we were able to commit where we have some, some college coaches from all divisions, from junior college to Division 1, Division 2. They committed to, if we stream the game, that they will, they commit to watch it. So, it's going to give not only our Fabian's kids an opportunity to get picked up by a school and offer a scholarship, but also throughout the county. With that, it's going to also promote our community. It's going to promote our beautiful facility that we have. It's going to promote our technology department, which will be out there helping us out. It's also going to promote the best hamburger in town, which is Pops. And so, they're going to get that. So, so I'm proud to say that we're going to be the ones that's going to start this All-Star Showcase for, for, for not only for our kids in the, in the Lower Valley, but all across El Paso County. And so, is only the girls?
Are the girls here or?
I don't think also that some, some of the girls are also over there.
All-star game.
Other than that, thank you very much. Okay, so yeah, let me put them out. I'm sorry. So, so we have our senior, which is Omar Salas. He was honored with all District First Team. We also have our other senior, who was also honored with all District Second Team. Then we have our junior, who was honored All-Defensive Team and also honorable mention.
What was her name?
Excuse me? Oh, Jacob Cifuentes and then, I'm sorry. Teo Quinones.
I'll just take that number. I don't want to take a picture with the boys. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
We can bring him back. Sure, sure.
Thank you very much, Coach. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Varva to come up so we can do maintenance recognitions.
Good evening, good evening. I hope you guys missed me. I haven't been up here in a while. So, President Estrada, Dr. Segovia, board members, community. So, it's official, I've been in the position for a year now. So, now I really know my crew. On March 6th, or the week of March 6th, we celebrated Maintenance Appreciation Week. And this team is very hardworking. As we speak, they are working, some of them are working at the high school for a situation that we had. There's not, there's not too early, there's not too late. They will definitely always be willing and able to do what needs to be done. Luckily, we were able to celebrate them. Thank you, Dr. Segovia, as he contributed to buying them some carne asada. So, we celebrated them. One of our employees got a grill donated by Home Depot. So, we've, we've been doing everything possible to not only change the culture, but also to show them that we appreciate them. One of the things that we start off with is that we develop the vision and mission. So, our vision is to stay ahead of the game with preventive maintenance. We've talked about that we need to stop being proactive, but we need to be preventive and make sure that things don't happen and that we have to be reactive. And our mission is to convey strategies for planning and implementing best practices for maintaining facilities and grounds. And so, I have a big group here today, so I want to go ahead and start calling those that are present. Mr. Jose Avitia, HVAC specialist. Ms. Virgina Moriel, she won the girl, so she'll have to send her carne asada here soon, so everybody's invited. Joseph Ortiz is over there dealing with sewer situation. Juan Rivera, HVAC technician. He's also out there. Have you noticed those that are not wearing the shirt that we said we were going to wear? I don't have either. We're out there working up until right now. Ms. Rekka Rove, district custodian. And a lot of people have tried to steal, but I haven't allowed. Ms. Armida Sotero, district custodian. And so, one of the things that we also started is ensuring that we have our IPM set the way it needs to be. And so, one of our maintenance specialists is also our IPM coordinator and that's Isaac Ugarte. I'm not missing anybody, am I? That is it. Again, some of them are still working, so come up to the front, guys. So, big round of applause for my crew.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Varva. Thank you so much, maintenance. At this time, we would like to call Ms. Natalie Carrasco. Well, Celeste can come over and do the speech then. I see that Celeste wants to do it. Ms. Carrasco will be saying a few words and, okay, or I will be saying. Okay. Well, this was the third year that Mariachi Gatos Salvajes went to compete at the state level in Seguin, Texas on February 22nd. They received an excellent score. They are three for three. We are very proud of them. So, we will be handing out certificates. Ms. Carrasco, would you like to come in and help me hand out certificates? I'll send you the graphic, don't worry. Mariachi, ya se la saben. We'll give you your award and then we'll take a picture with you with the board, right? Yes, we already know. Yay! Good afternoon, evening, evening. Good evening. We have Azul Ratamosa. So, we actually have a mix of high school and middle school students this year. This next student is a middle schooler, Sitlali Duron. Another middle schooler, Celeste Delgado. Juliana Váñez, High School. Jada Reyes. Middle schooler, Tricely Arroyo. Middle schooler, Delilah Ortiz. Senior, Sean García. Senior and president, Felix Flores. Middle schooler, Angela Candelaria. Gina S. Ortiz. Middle schooler, Marian Rentería.
I would just like to say a few words on behalf of my students and myself. I'd like to thank everybody in this room because it's with all of our combined efforts that these kids have made it so far in three short years and it's incredible what they're doing. And I just want to thank all of you guys for all your support and Mr. Rivas también, all the parents, Mr. Soto. Everybody, just thank you so much. Mr. Clies, Ms. Sofia especially, Ms. Buller, thank you so much, everybody for being here. I'm sorry to miss everybody, but thank you so much for all your efforts and I really appreciate all the help and love.
Ms. Carrasco, would you like your certificate? Would you like me to name out the students that aren't here? Okay. There you go. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Gatos Salvajes. Next in the agenda, well, where's, we need one Gato Salvaje to come back. Oh, there you are. One Gato Salvaje. And at this moment, I would like to ask Mr. Miguel Soto to come to the podium, please. Where we're going to, so is the next line?
Very.
Thank you, Ms. Maciel, Dr. Segovia, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm a little nervous, so bear with me. It is a great honor to stand here before you and recognize Azul Ratamosa, junior Fabian's High School and proud member of the Wildcat pride band. Through extraordinary dedication and talent, she earned a place in the prestigious ATSSB 4A All-State Symphony Band, a group composed of the top high school students, musicians in Texas. Their journey to Allstate is incredibly challenging. Out of tens of thousands of student musicians across Texas, only about the top 2% earned that coveted spot. After months, months of rigorous auditions, Azul was selected to spend four days in an intensive rehearsals in San Antonio under the direction of Dr. Eric Wilson, a nationally recognized conductor and the director of bands at Baylor University. Her efforts culminated in a breathtaking performance at the Lila Crockett Auditorium on February 15th. Azul has been playing the clarinet for six years, continually striving for excellence. She has advanced to the Texas State Sound and Ensemble Competition for three consecutive years, earning a Division 1 Superior rating each time. In addition, she is a member of Los Gatos Salvajes, where she sings and plays violin under the direction of Ms. Carrasco and also qualifying state in Mariachi, of course. Beyond music, Azul excels academically. She is ranked the top 10 of her class. She earned, she's going to earn her associate degree in May and plans to attend UTEP her senior year, where she aspires to audition and become a member of the prestigious UTEP Win Symphony, all while still in high school. We could not be more proud of her. Azul's achievements is a testament of her hard work, but it would not be possible without the support of our teachers, school administrators, our board of trustees, and the entire Fabian's community. I would also like to sincerely thank Dr. Segovia for attending Azul Allstates Concert in San Antonio. We deeply appreciate your time and continued support of our music program. Having district leadership present is such an important milestone, means the world to us and threatens a fine arts program in Fabian's ISD. Finally, I want to express my deepest gratitude to Azul's parents, Francisco and Rebecca Ratamosa. Their unconditional support, their unconditional support, encouragement, and dedication have been instrumental in her success. Azul's accomplishments are as much theirs as it is hers. It gives me great pleasure to present to you Azul Ratamosa. Having district leadership present is such an important milestone, means the world to us, and strengthens the fine arts program in Fabens ISD. Finally, I want to express my deepest gratitude to Azul's parents, Francisco and Rebecca Ratamosa. Their unconditional support, their unconditional support, encouragement, and dedication have been instrumental in her success. Azul's accomplishments are as much theirs as it is hers. It gives me great pleasure to present to you Azul Ratamosa.
Thank you so much, Mr. Soto. Thank you so much, Azul. At this moment, we are going to recognize a very special administrator, and I would like to ask Ms. Marquez, Ms. Bullard, if they would come up to the podium. Take it away.
Good evening.
Yes. Okay, I'll just leave it.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Segovia, community. Okay, my name is Rebecca Marquez. I'm a teacher at O'Donnell intermediate, and I'm a DI team manager. We have Ms. Bullard, our assistant principal, Ms. Nancy Chavira, Ray Hernandez, and Coach Friday, which we are also, we are part of the DI team, okay? We would like to congratulate Ms. Ruiz, Ms. Corina Ruiz, for being the first principal to receive the Destination Imagination Campus Administrator Award. This award is such a well-deserved recognition for all the support she has given us over the past seven years. She has always gone above and beyond to make sure the DI program thrives. It's also amazing to know that she was part of the DI or Odyssey of the Mind back then, when she was a student at O'Donnell. Thank you, Ms. Ruiz. We are so grateful for everything that you do. We love you. Congratulations.
Do you mind if we add some of our DI kids who are currently here, because they came in support as well? They're some of the ones that are getting to go to state this weekend.
Are you shaking hands or not?
Oh, sure, we can. Sure, if I would want to.
Everything has been wonderful. Everyone presented, and I'll be remiss... If I don't use, we'll be saving some of the best for last, but at this moment, we will be awarding a very special person, and I would like to ask Ms. Ruiz if she would come up and say a few words.
I don't know if I can talk right now. Just thank you for the DI award. It was a great recognition, but I do want to shout out our team that is traveling to state this weekend. They will be leaving on Friday to Dallas, where they will be competing. And then, we just got news that they have been picked to, they do a parade of regions, and O'Donnell team, the Little Monsters, have been picked to participate and represent West Texas at the state competition, so congratulations to them. And so, we're just so honored. We're so proud and honored to have Ms. Nancy Chavira, an O'Donnell teacher, as one of the newest Milken educators, the first in Fabens ISD history. Thank you to all the board members, most of the board members that were able to be there, Dr. Segovia, Mr. Aldaco, and some of our district administrators. Ms. Chavira will be traveling to Los Angeles, California next week to participate in the Milken Educator Awards Forum, held in her honor and the class of 2024. The theme of the awards, she will be there from Tuesday, April 1st, to Friday, April 4th, and the theme of the awards forum is "Three Thousand Strong and Growing", and will bring together a select cadre of Milken educators representing the National Milken Educator Network of Excellence. She will have the unique opportunity to meet Lowell Milken and participate in two days filled with celebrate, elevate, activate, and engaging sessions to network, share professional practices, and learn about initiatives of the Milken Family Foundation. Every single staff member at O'Donnell will be cheering her on and is making unique efforts to make her feel less stressed about leaving her students at such a crucial time. It is STAR. She knows that her job is to learn and enjoy this honor, and we will take care of her kids here. Oh, and she already has a long list of invites and guest appearances all over. She's been interviewed by different media outlets. She's been honored as an Allstate Hometown Hero at a UTEP's men's basketball game, and she'll be honored at Commissioner's Court. And she will be the guest speaker at the UTEP College of Education Recognition Event tomorrow, plus many other events during the summer. So we are very proud. Congratulations, Nancy. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. That's been the updates for today.
Do we have any communications and visitors? Next item on the agenda, 2024-2025 new hires, presented by Director of Human Resources, Aide Polanco.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Estrada, Superintendent, Dr. Segovia, Board of Trustees, community. My name is Aide Polanco, and this evening, I'm the Director of Human Resources, and this evening I will be presenting our new hires. So we do have Mr. Manuel de Jesús Aldaco, our Assistant Superintendent of CNI. And we also have Mr. Alberto Salazar, Custodian for Food Services, which I don't think he was able to attend tonight. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, presented by Superintendent, Dr. Segovia.
Good evening, President Estrada, Board of Trustees, community members. At this time, the administration recommends approval of consent agenda items as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve? I'll make the motion. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion at this time? No? We now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion pending. Next item on the agenda is approval of HB3 goals, presented by Dr. April Galavies.
Good evening, Board President Estrada, Superintendent Segovia, and Trustees. I'm here to provide the proposed House Bill 3 goals for this school here. Just wait for my presentation. So I know we have new board members, so I'll just give you an overview of the plan requirements and what HB3 actually is. So the HB3 actually came about after the 2030 rule for Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, which says that by the year 2030, individuals ages 25 to 34 will have, oh, thank you, will have either a certificate or a college degree and be ready to enter the workforce. So for the plan requirements, we do adopt three goals. We have a new superintendent, so it's only fair to adopt three new goals. The goals are related to early childhood. We have a checkpoint at third grade, so you'll see that two of the goals are related to reading, and the other one's related to math at third grade. The third goal will be related to CCMR. So in collaboration or in alignment with the 2030 rule, we kind of break down the performance levels according to that. So we want at least 90% of our students to be at approaches grade level, and then we want 60% of our students to be at meets grade level, and 30% of our students to be at masters. When we develop these goals, we look specifically at the meets grade level, which is a 60%. So you'll see that the goals that we're gonna look at are trying to get towards a 60%. Now, they're goals that are five-year targets, so for some of them, we're not gonna be able to get to the 60% at that time. However, we can come back next year. We see that we have a lot of progress, and modify our goals to be able to reach that 60%. So the district goals that we have proposed so far, and these, just a little bit of a background, we did have a district-wide needs assessment. We did have a district-wide needs assessment, and in working with our improvement planning and looking at the data, also the principals, if you recall, at the beginning of the school year, they presented to you all performance objectives based on last year's accountability system, so that's how we developed these goals and the numbers that we have projected. So the percent of third-grade students for the math assessments, we're projecting that right now, we're at the 20% for meets grade level, and that will be at 50% for June 2029. For reading, we are at 31% for meets grade level, and we're proposing or expecting that we will be at 51% for June 2029. For CCMR, right now, we're at 85%, but remember that CCMR data is one year behind, so I can technically calculate the CCMR score for this year based on last year's graduates, and it's around 91%. So we have it proposed that by August, I'm sorry, I put August 2024, but it should be 2029, will be at 97%. And then, we did want to include one closing the gap school. It's not a requirement, but just because we have a high number of emergent bilingual students, we felt it was necessary to have that. So for math, for our third grade, from 24% in June 2024 to 45% by June 2029. And for our reading, 27% to 47%. Now, it looks like a big increase, but right now, I'll show you some graphics from the data that I pulled for the past previous years, I think like four years, and you're gonna see specific trends. I'll explain what we think happened in those dips and how we think we can get there. So for the third-grade math historical data, you have, of course, 26 out of 133 tests that were submitted. Our goal is for 40 more students to be able to achieve the meets grade level performance. So if we break that down for five years up to 2029, we would need approximately eight students per year at six percentage points to be able to achieve that. If you see the 2018-2019, we were at 54% at one point. Then you see a dip, and then right after COVID, you see a spike up again, and then a dip down again. And that's really because we had, or we're thinking that because we had the STAR redesign, the test became a little more difficult, and that's why we see those dips in that. I'm sorry, my nose is... And then for the third-grade reading, we have the same kind of trend, where we have a high in 2018, and then we see a dip. We do see an increase at our meets grade level, but then again, we're down to 31%. For each one, the House Bill does require that you make an estimate of how many students and the percentage per year. So based on this class, it's gonna be 41 out of 133. And you might be thinking right now, like, well, our third-grade class might be different. I might have 145 students, 150 students, but we're projecting just based on this year's third-grade class. Okay, next, we have the CCMR data, and just how I said, right now, you can technically calculate the CCMR data for this school year. Based on this accountability system that we had for this past year, it was at 85%. Based on last year's graduates, we're gonna be this year around 91, 92%, assuming that they don't change the scout score conversion tool on us or anything. Now, I put 97%, which would have us at about a student or two students per year to make gains in CCMR. Then we have the breakdown of the emergent bilingual data. So for this one, you can see that we were at 58% back in 2018-2019, and then now we're down to 24%, but we also wanted to make a high jump on there, so we have three students per year at four percentage points per year. And you'll notice that this specific data, if you look back at the overall third-grade math data, the bilingual students are actually doing pretty well. They're doing higher than our overall student population. And then lastly, we have our RALA data, so it was at 47% at one point, and now we're at 27%. We're proposing that we go back to that 47% within five years. That would look at about 10 more students, two students per year, within the five-year at four percentage points per year. So that concludes my presentation. Just how I said, right after we receive STAR EOC scores, we'll come back, we'll make some updates in the summer, and we'll provide you with the performance objectives for each one of these goals, and just keep, and it'll be based on local assessments, and just keep updating you on how our students are doing to meet those targets. With that being said, the administration recommends approval of the House Bill 3 goals as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve? I'll make the recommendation to approve this presentation. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion at this time? No discussion? We now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Galavies. Next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action to approve intervention as part of the Rate 41 Group of School Districts and other local public entities and Public Utility Commission of Texas PUC Proceedings SOAA, docket 473-25-11-219, application of El Paso Electric Company to change rates and interlocal agreement with the participating members of the Rate 41 Group and the engagement letter with the special utility rate legal council in connection with their representation of the Rate 41 Group in the rate proceeding, presented by Dr. Segovia.
Good evening, once again. This item was brought forth by Mr. Safi. He notified us that the El Paso Electric Company is wanting or proposing changes to the rate structure and so that would negatively, could possibly negatively impact governmental entities. Of those entities, the school districts are included. And so what the governmental entities are proposing to do is join together and their name is known as Rate 41 and what they wanna do is collectively retain legal counsel to represent the, all their entities. In this rate case, if the, if the district wishes to participate and be included in this Rate 41 group, the El Paso Independent School District will act as the fiscal agent managing the funds and coordinating legal efforts. And again, if the, if the board approves participation at this joint, there could be, there could be potential savings if, if we participate, if we, if we instruct Mr. Safi to participate. In the document they sent, the percentage of the total rate that the district will be responsible for to pay legal, legal services would be 1.57%, which is in relation to the kilowatt watts that we use as a district. And so as an example, just for easy math, if, if the total cost would be 100,000 illegal fees, 1.57% would be $1,070 that we would commit. That's just an example, right? So it just still depends on how this goes. And so this is up for your consideration. Any questions you may have?
Dr. Segovia, so this is a, obviously you checked with Mr. Safi and so this, because we've been on this Rate 41 thing for like 15, 20 years.
Yes.
Something like that, so.
Yes.
This is his recommendation?
Well, his recommendation is for the board to consider either to participate or not, right? That's still up to the board. The consideration is if, if, if the district joins, then he could actually join these meetings and, and help the cost to make sure that the rates are as low as possible for the district.
I'm sure. Questions on the fee? Would that be a one-time fee or it'll be every time that we meet?
My understanding is a one-time fee at the end of the case.
I make the motion.
It's your understanding that you're not sure?
I could double-check for you, but my understanding, as, as it was presented and I studied, it is a total cost, so it'll be at the end where we get the, with the fee, but I could double-check for you and let you know.
I make the motion, move forward. One second. Do we need to read this motion?
Yeah, you need to read the motion.
You wanna read it?
Go for it.
Huh? I'm gonna do it? Okay. Okay, on behalf of Mr. Spence, I move to approve intervention. Intervention is part of the Rate 41 Group and Public Utility Commission of Texas PUC Proceeding SOAA, docket number 473-25-11219, application of El Paso Electric Company to change rates and the interlocal agreement with participating members of the Rate 41 Group of school districts and others' local public entities and the engagement letter with special utility rate legal council KNL Gates LP in connection with that firm's representation of the Rate 41 Group in the rate proceeding. We have no further discussion and we now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item on the agenda, second reading and possible approval of Texas Association of School Boards Policy Update 124, presented by Ms. Aida Polanco.
Good evening, Board President Estrada, Superintendent Dr. Segovia, Board of Trustees and Community. My name is Aida Polanco, Director of Human Resources, and this evening, I am bringing forward the second reading and possible approval of the Texas Association of Schools Board Policy Update 124. And what those changes are, they're all in the local policy. It's the CAA, Physical Management Goals and Objectives, Financial Ethics; CDA, Other Revenues and Investments; CY, Intellectual Property; DH, Employee Standards, Employee Standards Conduct; EHB, Curriculum Design and Special Program; EHBB, Special Programs, Gifted and Talented Students; FFG, Student Welfare, Child Abuse and Neglect; GKA, Community Relations Conduct on School Premises. And at this time, the administration is seeking for approval of adoption of these policies unless you guys would like to review it and I bring back a third reading on these.
We've already had the first reading, this is the second reading, so that, that being said, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve. We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion at this time?
Sorry, two seconds.
We now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes, six oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Polanco. Next item on the agenda, approval of Fabens ISD Financial Audit Services Request for Qualifications 25-757-01, presented by Dr. Segovia.
Good evening again, Board of Trustees. As you know, we have been seeking requests for qualifications for a, for a financial auditing firm and so we did receive two out of the total. We, I think we had like nine total, but they didn't complete packets, only two, only two were completed. So we did rate those two and so we are recommending, based on the, the committee that reviewed them, Singleton Clark and Company as the firm. They are the same firm that we had last year, that they re-appplied. And so what I did ask though is if we could get a different auditor and they have agreed and so we've spoken to him briefly to see if he could commit and he said yes, if so, if the board approves. And so the cost that comes with this, for this audit would be $59,500 for this year. At this time, I'll take any questions.
How much were we paid before, Dr. Segovia?
I'm gonna say we have, it was similar pricing. It might have been maybe $58,000, but I could get you that.
But a rough estimate, it was almost the same.
Yeah, it's pretty similar, yeah. But, but I'll get you that information.
And we are getting a different auditor?
Yes, sir. Well, it's the same company, but we have a different auditor.
Different auditor.
Yes.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve the request for financial audit services? I'll make the motion. We have a motion by Mr. Ron Flotis, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Greg Spence. Is there any discussion? We now move forward to proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and selection of Fabens ISD 2025-2026 Budget Workshop Date, requested by Dr. Segovia.
Yes, sir, thank you. Good evening again. We are in the middle of, of the creation of the budget for next school year and so as you know, we've been working closely with Region 19 to, to develop the budget and so we do have, we, we will be ready to present to you all at a workshop to give you the options that we have available for our district. And so I'd like to see, we could get some dates between May 1st through May 9th and that'll give us time to do our budget hearings and the things that we need to do to prepare for this. And so I know that you brought your calendars and so we could, see if we could come, agree to a, a date to meet as a budget workshop.
In the evening, in the what?
Yes, we would make it in the afternoon, yes. Any one of these days would.
What do you foresee for the time?
It'd take about, about an hour and a half.
Okay. You just can't make it on Cinco de Mayo. May 1st is a Thursday.
Thursdays, I can, I can on Thursdays.
No, you can't.
First of the eighth, yeah.
Okay, Monday?
I can do it on the other day.
Okay, Tuesday the 6th? Everybody go with Tuesday the 6th? What time?
Tuesday the 6th? Is 5:30 a good time for you? How about 5?
It's all, Ben's the only one that I know.
Oh, 5 is that? I'm okay with 5. 5?
I'm okay with like.
5 o'clock.
Thursday? I mean, on Tuesday.
Tuesday, May 6th.
May 6th?
Tuesday, May 6th at 5:00 PM.
Thank you.
We have to vote. Do we have a motion to approve the workshop for Tuesday? May 6th at 5:00 PM? Okay, we now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you everyone. Next item on the agenda, Fabens ISD 2024-2025 Budget Amendments to Function 52 and 53, presented by Dr. Segovia.
Thank you. Yes, sir, I'll ask you to go into your board packet. If you go after the cover sheet, there is a document there that explains the reason we do need to make a budget amendment for Function 52 that covers salaries for our SROs. And as you see the note there, we had budget last year for SRO salaries, so we do need to bring in money into this function. And then for Function 53, that's our technology salaries, we under-budgeted and so we need to make sure that we bring that to date and so we're moving some monies from, from the function to make sure that we could cover those salaries as well. The total budget amendment between those two functions, Function 52 and Function 53, is 300,000, $347,000 and there is no impact. We're not dipping into the, into the general fund or anything like that. What we did is we looked at, and, and Ms. Aida, now this helped, helped me, look into these functions to see if we had some line items that we had available to move monies from and so she was able to find, find those and so this is what we're bringing to, to you for, so that we can keep the, the budget balanced. At this point, we'll take any questions.
How are you so far off?
Good question, sir.
This is, this is a big amount. This is way off.
Yes, sir.
That's the same thing I said.
Yeah.
Since last year, this is a lot of money.
Yes, sir.
Apparently, if I'm hearing this correctly, there was nothing set for the SROs, right?
Correct. And so the budget development last year didn't include this function in there?
We didn't have SO.
So we didn't have anybody?
We did have the SROs, but when they developed the budget, it wasn't included. And so that's why we need to make sure we cover that. And then for the technology salaries, it was budgeted, but it was under-budgeted. So we need to make sure that we cover for the rest of the school year.
And this is a part of the auditor, when the auditor saying we're too top-heavy? It's 120,000 that were on technology?
No.
You know, they said we were.
Right.
We're top-heavy, then we are, we're out of level.
As I remember that, that was top-heavy central office employees, but it didn't relate to this.
I mean, but you have administrators.
Right.
At all levels. It was just central offices, what?
For, for that moment, yes, but this is, this is separate, this is SROs, these are not central offices.
Not SROs, I'm saying the 120.
The technology.
Well, that covers the entire technology department, includes from the director to our technicians, to our system administrators and our media specialists as well.
Are there any new employees that came in later and making this?
No, sir.
No?
So it was, it was the development of the budget that, that missed this, so we need to make this amendment.
So, so does it, I have another question. Like with the technology salaries, so from the beginning, the, their pay was incorrect or?
No, the, the employees have been receiving their pay.
Oh, yeah.
As, as normal. However, when it was budgeted, it wasn't, it wasn't enough money in there to, to cover the entire school year.
Of their salaries?
For their salaries, yes.
This is just salaries?
Salaries, yes.
So how, how do you even determine how much? Is it by their certifications, by their?
No, so you do historic, you do a historical review to see how much each year we spent and so having no changes to those positions and having the same amount of personnel, you're able to predict this is how much we would need to finish out the year.
And that, and this would be just to finish off this year? For next year, we have to make sure.
We need to make sure we.
Put that money.
Yes, yes, to avoid any type of amendment.
Are we gonna have some type of a check and balance for our budget for this coming school year? Because apparently nothing was, there was no check and balance on this budget because it would have been caught.
Right. Well, this school year is, for next school years, it's a little different because we're having the assistance from Region 19 and so we've been working with them to, to build the budget and we've been double-checking, triple-checking to make sure that we're accurate in what we're gonna present to the board for approval and so that's, that's who is working. Hopefully, later on today, if the board considers the recommendation I'll be making to hire a finance director, that person could also help look at the budget to make sure that we have everything we need in place. And so know that I'll be double-checking and triple-checking so make sure we avoid these type of situations.
I have another question, Dr. Segovia. You said you found $347,000 from line items.
Right.
That's almost $350,000 that was allocated to something else, but why?
So they, they were allocated in other areas, but that money has not been used and so at this point, because it hasn't been used, it's available for us to use here.
So why was it budgeted for those other things or, that's my question, like, why do we have so much money in the wrong places?
Right, again, it's, it's through the budget balance that we need to look at those items to ensure that if we are budgeting and saying this is what we're gonna spend, we know that that's where we need the money. And so when you say check and balances, we need to review and ensure that if we're saying this is what's gonna be spent in this line item, that we actually spend it.
Can you give me an example or give us an example of where they had set this money and never used it?
I could bring you back that. I don't, I wouldn't have that now, I have it here, but I could bring that back to the next board meeting. I don't wanna give you an example that's incorrect.
So it was like those, those divisions are over-budgeted? We're not taking away from somebody, something that.
No.
You know what, that's what I think we're covering. You have $350,000 out there that we're shaving off to bring to cover this.
So for example, if you look at the Function 11 where we're getting the funds from, that's instruction.
Right.
These funds were already allocated in those line items for whatever reason as they developed the budget last year. They were allocated, but obviously they were needed, right? It wasn't reviewed. And so those mon, those funds are available for us to make the change. It's not impacting the instruction because the monies were available, they haven't been used up to now, right? And then if you look at 36, that was $66,000 there that also were not used that we could use to, to move over to 52.
So Function 11 is instruction.
Instruction.
And it was not used and I'm just thinking, I'm sure if I was to go talk to our principal, they might say, well, we needed this or we needed that. I just don't understand how we're getting money from instruction when that is so crucial for, for the district, for our kids.
Right.
I, I don't understand how they were able to set all that money aside and not use it. I'm sure it could have been used somewhere in our classrooms. So I, this is.
It's, so yes, sir, that's, that, I agree with you in terms of using the money for instruction. However, as you know here in this note, the SRO salaries were not budgeted and so that money also could have been in here so we didn't have to be in this situation, right? And so we need to, we, what we need to do this year as we're developing the budget for next school year is ensure that we have the money allocated where it belongs and we're gonna need it and have a budget plan for it to use.
I have another thing, Dr. Segovia. I'm sorry, you had to come in. I have another thing, um Dr. Segovia. Um sorry, you had to come into all this.
That's okay.
Right, but um from here on now.
Thank you.
Um will we be checking every department for monies that are not being used like this, or if everything is actually being paid?
Yes.
Cause we don't wanna come next month and we forgot to to pay somebody else and we have another hundred thousand that we have to pay.
Well, we we do check, every month we do uh bring the the uh financials for review, and so we do check where we are with the percentages. And so I wouldn't be able to guarantee that we're not gonna have that. I know when I started here in this district in August, one of the board meetings was a one point two million budget amendment, which is similar to what we're doing here. We needed to make some monies up, make some changes on on our functions, right? And so we're hoping to avoid that next school year. Now, to finish up this school year, we're still looking to see where we are. We we do check those percentages, and if there's any need to make changes, we will. At this point, we didn't think that we needed any others, but for now, this is what we're needing. I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah, it's cause I still can't believe, cause this is a lot of money. How did they not bring it up, like throughout even the S R Os, like, or whoever sends them? How did they, we're not getting paid.
No, 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 they are getting paid.
It was just in a different function. Right, I mean, it's like the S R, so.
They would still get paid.
We ought to be out of eleven maybe, and he added in that function eleven instead of putting fifty two.
Correct, that's one way of seeing it. And so what happened, the S R Os have been paid. The, we, and we're using this account, it's we're in the negative.
To finish up.
Right, we're in the negative in this function.
How could payroll not see that? We didn't have enough money for our S R Os?
So payroll doesn't see this end of it, it's it's the financial side of it? And so it's it's difficult to understand.
They don't see a total for for S R Os?
None, not payroll, finance does. So so when we do those financials, if we begin to review the percentages, that's when we discovered, wait a minute, we are, we are gonna need monies here. Uh and that's when that was uncovered, so that's why we brought it forward. Right, but right now, we're in the negative in that account.
And then um I just have something to say in Dr. Segovia's defense. You just came in, sir, so. This was prior to him coming in, this is our prior director of finance, and that's why we are trying to fix this issue, so we're gonna try to avoid this happening in the future.
I agree, I agree.
Thank you for that.
Unfortunately, you're in the seat.
Yeah.
Where we, the questions come about.
No, actually, actually, fortunately, you're in the seat because.
For us, but for him it was.
Yeah, you found this. I think we all know, uh you know, I don't wanna say anything, I'm not gonna get into legal trouble, but I think we know, we know what's going on here. And so fortunately for us and for this district, you have, you have found these things, and I, you know, I trust that you're gonna, you know, you're making the, you've been making the the really good decisions, and so we're gonna, we're gonna do what's necessary to.
Correct.
To move forward. It's it's upsetting, it's very upsetting to me and I think to most of us that, you know, this, this is exactly what Mr. Hernandez is saying, you know, like, you know, I mean, I know the money's there, but it was just somewhere else, but you know, I hate to think that that uh, that the tennis team didn't get, I don't know, rackets or or the band didn't get something, or whether the teachers at the Odala or the elementary didn't get pencils because because of this. And so, so this is, this is, this is very upsetting to to me as well as I'm sure to all of us, and so, so but that being said, I know that you're, you weren't here, and and I know that you found this, and we're we're very fortunate. And you know, we got, we gotta, we gotta ensure that this never happens again, because this is very serious, uh you know, very serious, it's it's a.
And going back, that's where we were talking about a deep audit, just to find our mistakes, we could fix them. Now, uh Dr. Segovia, on the money that we got from uh function eleven, the classrooms, our campuses will not suffer because of this.
No, they have their budget, they've been working through their budget, so they they're, they're not being impacted.
Okay.
And we know that going forward, Dr. Segovia, that this is going to, that, you know, we're gonna get, the state's gonna start, once they they go forward with the uh, the the charter schools and all that stuff, we're gonna get cut uh funding and and so we have to be, we have to be thinking business twenty four hours a day, because we gotta pinch every penny, and it's.
Yes, sir.
You know, unfortunately, you know, I mean, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but I mean, you know that's coming, so.
Yes, sir.
So.
Cause we knew from the beginning there was gonna be discrepancies, so.
Yeah.
Um, we just found some right here.
And I'm sure it won't be the first, but I mean.
So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just glad there was money.
Right.
To be found.
Thank you. And I do wanna thank our finance team, cause they're working very hard to make sure that we're finding these things, so that we could correct them as we go, so we don't have to wait till the end of the school year to do an enormous budget uh amendment, you know, and that's what we're trying to do here, so.
Yes, that's good.
With that said, do we have a motion to approve the budget amendments to function fifty two and fifty three?
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. We have no further discussion. We now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, six oh. Next item on the agenda, discussion and possible action on favors I S D board policy, C H local and purchasing and acquisition, presented by Ms. Ramírez. Well, request.
Thank you, Mr. President Estrada. So Ms. Ramírez requested that we review C H local, which is uh in in part our threshold, the what what the board approves that the district uh purchased. We could purchase anything below the thirty thousand that's listed in our policy right now. Um anything above that would need to get board board approval. If you look at your board uh packet, I did provide you a memo with comparisons in other districts in the area, so that you can make an educated decision if you want to lower or raise the threshold at this time. And so I also provided to you the the memo with a comparison, but also, of course, the policy is there. Uh and then right after the policy, there's twenty four transactions last year that surpassed the thirty thousand, and I listed them here just for your review. Um at this point, I'll pass it over to Ms. Sepulveda.
Yes, on this, on, as a matter of fact, I brought this up because uh since we're, we know how, we don't know if vouchers are gonna affect us, and I think we should uh keep an eye on the money that we're spending. I think that uh we, we had a lot more money in there that uh we don't know where it was spent. And since right now, as as we were discussing our budget, I think that we're gonna have to be careful and use our money wisely. So I would um, I would suggest that we could bring, if we could bring it down to fifteen thousand. And half of the thirty thousand, if there was to be an emergency or anything, we could uh have emergency meeting. So that is, that is what I, I think. I don't know if you all have any other comments?
Going back to what Mr. Florida said uh earlier about the vouchers coming in, and that we're gonna have to really, really focus on our money and be careful. I think, I agree that we need to lower it. At least for the beginning, and then we'll, we can s- take baby steps and see what happens, and then we can raise it up if we have to. But uh just tips, play it safe and um stay in compliance and have enough money. I think we do need to lower it.
Any other questions?
Just a statement. Um, in the superintendent's report, comes out every check. Now, I'm not disagreeing with you guys if you wanna do it, but the superintendent's report gives every check that is written out, and it shows everything that is spent. So in the past, you go through every check, and if you have a question, you see a outstanding check, you see something for, you know, whatever, if it's fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety nine, call him up and ask him why. I'm just saying, that's what, that's what the superintendent's report's for, to go and, and I'm just saying, it could be, cause they will do that too. They'll do it, they'll, they'll split a receipt, an invoice, and do fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety nine, and then fourteen thousand nine hundred nine, and it won't hit the threshold of fifteen thousand. So look at a lot of that stuff. I'm just saying, that's what it's there for.
Yeah, and I agree with you.
Cause that's what, that's what I I saw some of them, that they were close to twenty nine thousand. And close to getting to a thirty thousand, you know, you know, they make it to where uh.
Oh, yeah, they can split it up.
And by that time, it's too late for us.
Yes, no, I'm not disagreeing.
No, no, and I agree with you.
It's a lot of it right there, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But we're prepared to be transparent, and we won't be doing practice, those practices, I think we do need to be transparent to the board, with the community or employee.
I'm just saying, some, cause sometimes people can't wait.
Right.
You know, they, I mean, they say, the deal's on right now, but I'll split the the invoice with you. You know, I'm just saying, cause sometimes that's, I think, cause we had it, I can't remember what we had it at, and we moved it up to thirty because of that reason. Because we're losing out on some deals, cause we had to call a special meeting. And 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 four days, sometimes those companies won't wait four days. I I'm just saying, I'm starting up there.
Yeah, it's a double edged sword.
Yeah, it is.
Uh and I just think that with not knowing what's gonna happen with uh with Governor Abbott, uh we should just play it safe and then take it from there. If we can raise it up, we raise it up. And uh, we trust you, Mr. Segovia, so.
Thank you, appreciate it. Remember to work with whatever you guys give us.
It's just baby steps, just at the beginning to make sure that we don't uh end up where other districts are at at the moment.
No, and another thing that I I saw, I also saw was that before, when we came in, the threshold was at fifty thousand dollars. It was back before COVID, and I said, okay, right now I see the security guards, everybody's having trouble with their cars, nobody decided to buy a car. So security cars, their cars break down, what are they doing, walking to their schools? You know, I, I was thinking about, I said, they could have bought cars if they had fifty thousand dollars. But right now, we have to be careful on responding, spending money, and that's the reason, so.
With that said, with that said, um it's, well, everybody is in agreement, we all have to take measures right now and be proactive and prevent financial problems for the future, so I make the motion to change the threshold from.
Ms. Ramírez has a motion of fifteen thousand.
I I, well, the motion to proceed, I move forward to fifteen thousand, from thirty thousand to fifteen thousand, yes. We now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, six oh. Next item, the agenda will be going to close session as per Texas government code five five one dot zero seven four for discussion selection of director of finance. Request by Dr. Segovia, running at seven forty nine. Requested by Dr. Segovia, going in at seven forty-nine.